It's amazing to be controlled by a blinking light. Good morning. Today is special meeting of the Commissioners Court of Grimes County, Texas. It is Wednesday, the 3rd of April, 2019. It is 9:00 a.m. We are calling the meeting to order. Would you please rise for the invocation? Remain standing for the pledge to the U.S. and the Texas flag. Shall we pray? Father, we thank you for this day and the blessings of this life, dear God. We are grateful that you allow us to be your children. We would pray, Father, that we do the things that you want us to do, that we act in the way you want us to act, and the way you want us to serve one another. Father, we thank you for that opportunity to serve as officials of Grimes County, and also citizens of Grimes County, that we can help and take care of each other in the work that we do on a day-to-day basis. We thank you for your word. We thank you for the guidance that it gives us. And again, we just thank you for your love. It's in your son's precious name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. If you'd be seated, please. Second item on our agenda are its public comments, and we look forward to your comments. We would ask that you come to the podium, identify yourself, and limit your comments to two minutes, please, or less. Good morning.
My name is Cory Mooney, and I'm with the Grimes County Attorney's Office. Wanted to remind everyone the Blue Ribbon Ceremony dedication is tomorrow morning at 10:00 a.m. at the Law Enforcement Center. It is in conjunction with April, which is Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month. We will be dedicating a big blue placard in honor of the 64 confirmed cases of child abuse and neglect in Grimes County last calendar year. It'll be up all month for anyone visiting, just to, I guess, let the word out that this is still happening, and this is our eighth year, I believe, and the numbers have remained pretty consistent. It was 64 last year. We'll have representatives from Scotty's House, Voices for Children, which are our volunteer guardian ad litem in CPS cases. CPS will be there, and then representatives from local law enforcement.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Cory.
And also representatives from the Child Abuse Department.
Yes.
Thank you. Are there any other? Yes, there are. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Mary Ann Waters, Tax Assessor Collector here from Grimes County. Just wanted to remind everyone that the Plantersville Stonemire Department is having their bazaar this Friday, 11 till...
Sunday.
Sunday. What did I say?
It's Friday. Your spirit, hurry.
I wish it was Friday so I could get it over with. But no, it is Sunday.
And barbecue and auctions?
Barbecue, auctions, booths, whole nine yards.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, oh, no, bite your tongue.
I'd like to make some...
It'll feel like it because of all the work you gotta do.
I'd like to congratulate Grimes County for making this month's County Progress Magazine. We wanted a few counties that have a budget calendar, and she asked back in February at the conference if she could highlight Grimes County, and so I just wanted to let y'all know, doing a good job.
That's pretty cool.
Doing a good job, Ms. Wagner.
Thank you. I'm published now. You will respect me.
You are a published author.
About your time. Okay. And I'll make a public announcement. Just as a reminder, on this Saturday, 3:00 to 4:00, there will be an unveiling of a commemorative World War I memorial representing the men and women that served from Grimes County, and that number was over 2,000 during that war from Grimes County. So that celebration is going to be from 3:00 to 4:00, and weather permitting, it's, well, it's gonna happen, but weather permitting, we'd love to have your attendance, so. And it's going to be in the Anderson Historical Park, right in front of the Methodist Church, where the old iron bridge is. I don't know what we really call that location, but I think it's Anderson Historic Park. 3:00 on, the event starts at 3:00 on Saturday. Are there any other public announcements? And finally, are there any other public announcements? Hearing none, seeing none, we're going to move to consent agenda items, number three, consider and take action to approve the treasurer's list of claims and bills. Consent agenda item number four, consider and take action to approve payroll. Consent agenda item number five, approve monthly reports submitted by the county treasurer for February 2019, and authorize the advertisement of affidavit of same in accordance with Local Government Code 114.026, and that's our page three of the agenda. And consent agenda item number six, consider and take action to approve budget amendments and/or line item transfers. Are there any questions on three, four, five, and six, commissioners?
I do. I have a question. Judge, I'd like to pull the bill invoice number 230-288 to PGAL for $40,684.75, and request an itemized accounting for that bill from the auditor's office, please, if you can get one.
If you can give us the number?
We just want it pulled.
Yeah, I don't know protocol to hold off voting for that bill. I mean, y'all can approve it or call for a vote on it.
Well, we can approve everything except that one until the itemized bill is presented and reviewed. I would believe that would be appropriate.
Jesse's gonna go and see if, was the bill itemized?
It's broken down.
Okay. Jesse's going to pull a copy of it.
All right. So with that, shall we approve, or if there's no questions on three, five? Let's see, which ones?
Three, four, five.
Three, four, five, and six. There'll be four, five, and six, isn't there? Because the treasurer's list of claims is where you're requesting. So is there a motion to approve four, five, and six consent agenda items at this time?
I do have a question.
Okay.
Are we gonna approve that with the exception of perhaps that...
Well, he was leaving.
I'm leaving number three out. For now, we can come back to that one.
Oh, we're gonna come back? Okay, all right.
So I'm just looking at four, five, and six at this time.
Okay. I make the motion, we approve consent agenda items four, five, and six.
Okay. There's a motion before the court on consent agenda items number four, five, and six by Commissioner, to approve by Commissioner Walker, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. It's a 4-0. Let the record reflect that Commissioner Mallory is not present at the moment. Okay, let's continue on with the business at hand. Agenda item number seven, Emergency Management Subdivision Coordinator, Mr. David Lillard, discuss and take action regarding Mr. Walton's request for a variance from Section 232.001 subdivision plat requirements of the Texas Local Government Code for 16.443 acres and three lots of 1.5 acres each. That's our attachment number seven. Mr. Lillard?
Yes, Judge and Commissioners. As requested, we went out on Monday, went with CAT, and we took a look at the property, met with the property owner, Mr. Walton, and in discussing what he's intending to do with that property, he also revealed that he's looking at eventually, sometime soon, dividing more property along that frontage on County Route 108. And at that point, I suggested to him that he consider just opting out of the request for the variance and going ahead and plating, and he later sent me an email, I believe it was yesterday, he sent me an email confirming that he is gonna go ahead and plat. So that negates the need for...
So with the...
Yes, that negates the need for a variance. He's withdrawn his request.
All right, sir.
And he will bring that to me, since he has it ready, and I'll have it on the next subsequent Commissioners Court.
Okay. Let the record reflect, we'll take no action there. Shall we go back to consent agenda item number three? Commissioner Cox, you have the invoice in front of you?
Yes.
What the services entail, is that defined?
It is defined. So paying for the services that they render.
Okay. Is there any additional question?
We've spent a lot of money for the services that they render.
Sure. And that's not the first payment to be gone.
No, sir.
Enlighten us, auditors. There was an initial contract that defined particular services and cost. I know that it was budgeted in the '18 budget, and not all of that money was spent, so some of it's being utilized in the '19 budget. Okay. But whether it's budgeted or not, we still need to know what's being spent for.
It was for construction documents. Is that right?
Yes. Construction documents permit bid support and schematic design. Every time that they put pen to paper, it costs us money. And I don't necessarily know that I agree with all that, but...
Well, you're attending a meeting. You're attending a meeting today. You can certainly talk to their representative.
Yes.
Okay.
As far as the bill is concerned, they have submitted an itemized bill for the services rendered.
So I'll take you back to consent agenda item number three. Is there any, is there a motion to approve?
I move that we approve agenda item number three.
Second. I think Commissioner Walker beat you on that.
I didn't even get it out. I just...
Well, let Commissioner...
He got me.
Like a bet, I'll take any flinch, Commissioner, any flinch. Is there any further discussion?
Clarify who you have.
I have a Commissioner, I have a motion before the court by Commissioner Cox, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Close. Motion carries. We will now go to agenda item number eight. Grimes County Commissioner precinct court, Commissioner Philip Cox, review, discuss, and take possible action regarding the policy on compensation, Section 6.1 and Section 7. See attached, it's our attachment number eight. Commissioner?
So this was, as you're aware, Policy 6.1 was an effort to address some of the issues that are associated with the salary and grade scale. And in that policy that was, the court approved, indicated that any job description, grade level, or salary change needed to be brought back before the Commissioners Court for approval either in February or May. There's been a question posed to me about a possible conflict with number seven, Policy Number Seven, Section Seven, in that, in summary, an elected official can make adjustments to a newly filled position in the fiscal year if they have the budget without Commissioners Court approval. So, in essence, that would be a salary change, and we have one policy that says they can do it, and one policy says that it needs to come back for consideration in Commissioners Court either in February or May.
For whatever reason, I'm not following your references. I've got a Page C, the Policy on Compensation, the first one.
It's an attachment, 6.1, right there on your left side?
On the backside of that.
Okay.
And then number seven.
Third or a third.
Okay, the 6.1 versus the seven?
Yes.
All right, I'm sorry. Bless you, ma'am.
The question is, if we follow seven, then that kind of negates 6.1.
Our HR Director, Lucy Pope, is present. Lucy, do you have an opinion?
Oh, well, I feel the same way as Philip Cox does. We have two different policies that says it, you know, so we need some clarification on that.
Are you getting requests? Or are you seeing that happening?
Well, I'm gonna change the statuses across my desk.
How many have you had?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight?
Since I showed the one.
So there's been 28 requests. I think it was the intent of the Commissioners Court that changes such as grade, level, job description, the salary of a particular position would be in the purview of the court. Seven doesn't take that into consideration.
When y'all approve a budget, you approve a certain number of employment slots for each department, and you have the range set in there, and y'all choose what the highest dollar amount you're gonna pay for that range.
Yes.
And so what's happened in the past, someone leaves, they were making $15 an hour, but we wanna hire them in at $12 an hour, give them a probationary period, see how well they learn, and if they learn, bring them up some to, not necessarily all the way up to the $415, but maybe by the end of the year, bring them up to that.
So if I can address that, so the salary and grade scale was implemented for a couple of reasons, but one of the main reasons is so that we could remain at least as competitive as we could afford to remain in the marketplace. If I hire somebody, for instance, using your example, at $12 an hour, and after a certain amount of time, raise them up to $15 an hour, you mentioned a probationary period, we've been discouraged from using that, because if you indicate that it's a probationary period and you decide you wanna get rid of that employee in the first week, and you've told them a 90-day probationary period, according to what the information that I've learned through TAC is, you still could be on the hook for the whole 90 days. But if, going back to the scenario, if I hire somebody in at $12 an hour, and after 90 days, I give them a $2 an hour raise, I've given them a merit raise, and there's really no other reason to give them a raise, other than it being a merit raise at that point in their, and we have a policy on that as well. Generally speaking, and I guess Ms. Pope could address this, if that occurs, it's supposed to have a performance evaluation attached to that request, and I would, I mean, is that practice that if somebody's, so we're just giving a raise, to be given a raise, even though, and we'll just use the last budget cycle. The Commissioners Court did not provide for funding for merit raises. So we get involved in those situations as well. The only thing that I'm aware of that the county actually pays for longevity is the tenure. Is that what they call it?
Right, the tenure bump.
Tenure and retirement. So there's a lot of issues at stake.
If I may, in that number of 28 that have come across your desk, were any of those the tenure bumps?
Just one, but most of these are from the Sheriff's Department. Tell me, Todd, are you...
I'll be the one talking about this. In fact, this is the first time we've been made aware of this decision, and we haven't had the most time to prepare for it since we just found out this morning that, but if you go back and look on the policy, Section 1, it clearly states that we're exempt from the standards on here because the Commissioners Court has already approved our salary structure, our merit raises, and how that is paid out throughout the year, and that's where probably the vast majority of these schedules are coming from.
Okay.
So it's been proved countless times in the past and the future, each budget year, the money is figured and taken care of, so y'all prove it at each budget cycle.
Correct.
And then also, it has been also approved in the salary structure, we were pulled out and put into our own separate classifications, and the ranges were expanded, I say not expanded, they kept the same as far as pay, except it allowed us, for all these little bumps, to be able to do without having to come to Commissioners Court every time, and that was also approved back in Commissioners Court, too.
Now, are most of those certificate pay changes?
No, the certificate pay changes actually is addressing the policy in the section five. So those are done when they get that, and then, as our previous salary structure is based on, you know, like year one, two, and four, some of that's based on when they get their jail certificate, then they get their raise, and then it goes from there.
Todd or Lucy, do you know, well, Todd, you wouldn't know, but Lucy, out of the 28, do you know how many of that 28 are associated with the Sheriff's Department?
Three fours of them.
Three fours. Okay.
But I mean, that's through the whole year.
Yeah, that's...
Yeah, no, I understand.
I took it on the...
You're talking, maybe two a month if you average it out.
Are those for two?
Not even that much. No, that's not what I'm talking about. Y'all have your own operating stuff, and it's separate from the issue at hand, and I agree with you. I mean, y'all already have those structures in place, and have had, and the Commissioners Court has approved those, so, but y'all are an exception to the rule. Not all the other departments have the same structure that y'all have.
Okay. And I'll just make that aware as soon as I can. We're being thrown after.
I don't think anybody mentioned the Sheriff's Department. I didn't.
Okay, so... So let me ask you this, if I may.
If you come to the podium and identify yourself, you may.
Mary Ann Waters, Tax Assessor Collector. I am one that submitted that, because I hired in a new person in, when did she start? She's been there, oh, right before Christmas. She came between Christmas and New Year's, I think. So when I hired her in, I kinda hired her at the bottom of the base, so she has no training in what we do. Then after, I, number one, I never tell them there's a probationary period. I just, they work, and then whenever I see after two, three months, if I see how they're coming along, you know, of course, the person that, my example, the person that left was making over $14 an hour. This one I hired in at the bottom of the scale, and I didn't know she was making 15. I didn't want to start this new person at 15, because she might not do the, even when she's trained, she might not do the job that the person that was making $15 an hour would. So I wouldn't pay her, I wouldn't wanna pay her the same amount of money that I'm paying somebody else, and somebody else is working harder than her, because I can't give the other person a raise up. So I'm not trying to use the money that would be difference from the new hire and what the pay scale was before. I'm trying to keep it all within that one position and not spread it out to another position, because I can't do that, according to what our rules say here. So I like to hire them out at the bottom, and then after a few months, I can see how they're doing, and then I can bump them up to where the performance that they're doing at that point in time.
Okay.
And then I'm still not going over what the person before was making. So that's already budgeted, that amount of money is budgeted into my salary, in my budget.
Okay, if I go back to 6.1, according to what you're seeing, then you make that request, and it's submitted to the Human Resource Department, and then it's placed, it says then placed on a Commissioners Court agenda for consideration in February or May.
But if you look at number seven, where it talks about vacant positions...
But it's still an adjustment, so that adjustment, to me, 6.1, should have been followed from that point in February or May, and then we have a set time, because last year, we kept seeing all these adjustments pay people on the May.
Well, and the thing about February, it's not to cut you off, but between February and May, if I hire somebody in May, my, our cycle doesn't end until August 31st, so that means I wouldn't be able to give her an adjustment. I would have to try to get one in the budget process, but if not, she's got, I can't give her that extra money, because our budget cycle's over, because it says fiscal year in there.
Yeah, well, I was gonna say, why do you feel like you can't hire them at a specific amount and say, this is gonna be your salary for this year, until we can, we're able to make those adjustments, and they go before Commissioners Court, you know? Even though you see the performance improve, it's just that this is the way we do it in the process.
Yeah, because like I say, the person comes in the first day, they're not gonna perform with the person that left. They're not gonna do that.
I can understand that.
Yeah, and that's my reasoning.
So the salary and grade scale is supposed to be created on market value? So if you hire that person at whatever you hire them within that range, you've hired them at market value, because you've said, this is what I can pay you, and they've agreed to accept that rate. So if you're gonna bump them up anytime before the next budget hearing, that in essence, and I understand what the policy says, and I'm just here to get that...
That's why we're trying to get clarified, right.
If you bump them up, in essence, there's no reason to bump them up, other than merit. And if you're gonna do that, then you, there's a whole policy on merit raises and performance evaluations, and the Commissioners Court through the last budget cycle, and I'm not saying you in particular, I'm just saying any situation, did not award any merit pay. So that's where the quandary is. And if you wanted to give merit pay, then it specifically says if you're gonna change that salary that you've hired them, you need to bring that to Commissioners Court, and Commissioners Court at that time could say, okay.
Okay, let me ask you this, then. If we submit these, and I'm just trying to get it clear, and I'm putting the monkey on Lucy's back, but if we submit these, should it be my responsibility to put it on the agenda in February or May, or should it be Lucy's to put it on the agenda for February or May?
I would, I'd prefer it to be Lucy's responsibility, because she's kind of the document control person, so you submit it appropriately to HR. HR would say, okay, but we're on the hold until Commissioners approve it. So procedurally, I would believe, I would desire that HR be the one that gets it set on the agenda. That way, it's kind of consistent language, consistent thought process, and understand the times, so.
Okay.
That's not, that's not just my decision to make, but I mean, procedurally, Commissioners, I think that would be an appropriate process for our department heads and our elected officials to follow, because Lucy would then be the control point. And, you know, if there was something out of order or not in conjunction with policy, she could raise the caution flag to that department head or that elected official.
I have a comment on something that Commissioner Cox made on the 90-day probationary period. All of our employees are at-will employees, are they not, Lucy? Okay. With an at-will employee, there's no, to my knowledge, there's no court case that says we have to pay them for 90 days or anything. If somebody comes in working for me at an, under an at-will contract, and on the second day, they do something that's drastically wrong, they can be fired at that time with no ramifications, as far as I know.
Well, that, Ms. Sands from TAC was here, what, two weeks ago, and that specific issue was brought up about communicating a probationary period to your employees. I don't know what the case law is, I'm just going off her expertise in the HR field. That, even... That, even if you did the scenario that you described, that there's a potential possibility that you still have to pay them for those 90 days because in essence, you said, not you, but somebody communicated, you're gonna, we're gonna pay you for 90 days.
Yeah, that would be a contract, though, right?
No, 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 no. We, we're an at-will employment agency, government agency, and we don't have a probationary period.
But what, what ends up happening, if we don't follow the process, because any employment letter or agreement needs to come through HR so the language is correct and it keeps us innocent of saying things like, well, you're gonna have a 90-day or six-month probationary period. Oh, we're gonna pay you $50,000 a year and we terminate them in the first month and they go, that's cool, but where's my other $45,000? So, you're right, Commissioner, that if things are said or implied, an individual has the right to take that to court. And in, in instances, insurance companies will say, pay them, get them out of here and be done with it because the, the cost is $10,000, the court costs are gonna cost you $50,000. Commissioner, you're right, we are an at-will. I mean, if you woke up this morning, Commissioner, at 5:00 and you had an employee and you, you just had the idea, life is gonna be better without them, you have the right to terminate them as long as it's not discriminatory. But, yes, you could do that, just like the employee could wake up at 5:00 in the morning and say, I'm tired of being a Grimes County employee, I quit. So, but you're right in the point you make and you're right in the point you're making. That's why it's important that when we do have employment offers made, that they really need to come through the HR department so we have that consistency of language and we don't imply things that aren't there for us to be obligated to.
Sure. And the key to termination and documentation, always.
So, the solution may be that number seven should say with Commissioner's Court approval instead of the without? Is that what you're maybe proposing?
I mean, that would keep it consistent with policy 6.1. I mean...
If you'll come to the podium and identify yourself, you certainly may.
Harry Walker, Woodbridge Engineer. If I may, I think the one policy you're referring to is specifically for elected officials, that elected officials can grant those bonuses pay without coming back to Commissioner's Court, but just department heads such as myself cannot.
It says...
And in the past, we have...
It says elected officials and the department.
It's both of them.
Is it both?
It's both.
I thought I heard you say just elected officials. Okay, never mind.
He, he is, he is saying that.
But I do, I do want to bring up one thing for clarity in my mind. I believe we designated the February application date and the May application date, and I have been wrong before, but I thought those two adjustments were really on the basis of, hey, I have a position that I think's a grade three, I really think that position needs to be a grade four. That's what the February and the May dates were to reevaluate job descriptions and where they fit in the salary structure.
Okay.
So, we would not have those during the budget process?
Exactly. We'd be done with them in the, before we got into the budget process and we'd have time to make those decisions because last year, it did get to be, I guess, confusing, is the right word, or disruptive.
Well, let me ask you this. All of my deputies are four. Can I hire one at a three even though I have a position at four and then in the February or May ask for them after their training ask to be moved up to a four?
No, because, because that goes back to what Commissioner Cox said. When the Job Evaluation Committee evaluated that position, it's a four. So, you can hire them at the bottom of the four if you believe that's the right thing to do, and in many instances, it is, particularly if they're not trained. But we know with a minimal experience, they're gonna fit into that particular job category. So, again, it might be a decision of discussion, but if we've evaluated it to be a four, you need to hire it in at the four if you want to save as much money as possible if you hire it at the bottom.
That was a big discussion. We, we discussed that quite a bit during the salary.
So, that's the issue. If we do that, she does that and wants to bump, she hires them at the bottom and wants to bump that person up after, whatever.
Mm-hmm.
Does that need to come back before Commissioner's Court?
According to your policy, it says, any elected official or department head subordinate to the Commissioner's Court may request a change to a job description, grade level, or salary.
And that, that was included in there because of budgetary issues. Because if you do that, the Commissioner's Court has budgeted, for instance, that higher pay, and if you hire them at a lower rate of pay, then you have a differential between the high and the low, and where does that money go?
It's for that one position and if it's not used, it goes back into fund balance.
Right.
So, who, who determines if it's used or not?
Well, according to the policy of the seven, it was the department head or elected official within not this full year.
Yeah, correct. But the other one is not saying that.
Right.
So, we need to, we need to figure out how we're gonna handle that.
Okay.
That's what I said, if you take out the word with, that's it.
Seven off the table, you're doing six one. That's what it looks like.
Say that again.
It looks like you just take seven off the table altogether and just do six one.
I'll make a suggestion that Commissioner Cox and myself, since we were involved, since I was involved in the salary structure, and Lucy Pope, the three of us review this and then propose additional language or corrected language and present it to the court for discussion and approval or disapproval. Commissioner Cox, would you be in agreement with that?
I, I'm fine with that. I think it could be simplified just by simply in number seven, taking the word without, if we're gonna be that involved in the, in departments.
So, approved budget without Commissioner's Court approval?
If you, if you take out without and put in there with...
Okay, just take out out and leave with.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Commissioners, does that sound reasonable to you? Yes.
I have one question. When y'all were talking about six one, you said February and May were for the grade changes only, but are we gonna leave it? Is it going to now be the salary, grade changes, all of that? Is it gonna, because when you and Commissioner Dobignanski were speaking, y'all said y'all thought it being presented in February and May were for grade changes only.
But that's not what the policy says.
Okay, so, we're gonna leave it as this for grade changes salaries?
It said job description, grade level, or salary.
And generally speaking, I mean, if you're talking about changing the grade level of an employee, that's gonna include the salary, the salary range.
Right, I was more geared towards just the salary within the same range, within the same grade. So, that's where I was going.
Gotcha.
Okay, it's Wednesday, I missed that conversation.
Well, it's still a salary change, so you were concerned about if, if the other two were in there or not, but...
Well, like for Mary Ann's position, or situation, is that gonna, six one is gonna apply to that, to where she has to bring it before court even though she has her money in there?
According to your policy, it says salary.
Well, okay, but I mean, that's not what my understanding was. My understanding is, as I stated, the February and the May is, Harry Walker brings in, I've got a motor grader operator grade five, and I think that needs to be a grade eight, and here's a revised job description, Court, I'd like you to review and approve or disapprove. And then we say, yeah, that's good, we're gonna move it to eight, and that's what the job is now worth.
So, under that logic, there shouldn't be any salary changes throughout the year?
With the exception of what Mary Ann brought to our attention, where if she's, if she's brought in a person who thinks they're, they're capable of bringing them in, they learn the job, and then they're pleased with the progress, I don't think it would be inappropriate to have a performance review.
I think it'd be necessary.
That would go along with it, that would justify, hey, I hired them at 12, I think they're worthy of 13, and, and, you know, that backs her up and it gives us a reason to, to recognize versus on a whim.
Well, I have a question, and I think some of this came out of that discussion about...
Is that gonna confuse my thought process?
It may just might. Okay, 'cause I'm reading what the policy says, and that's what we put in here, so. But back to that question that you're asking, and we're talking about adjustments, some of the reason why we talked so in-depth before about this is because people were leaving, there was this budget put in the department, and you could put that person at whatever budget. You're talking about taking them down, but we did have the scenario of people bringing them in at the highest point because they had extra money. And you then say, I hire my friend, I'm not seeing anybody's doing this, but I hire my friend and I'm gonna put her at the top of the scale, not at the same amount that that person that left was at. That was some of the discussions that we saw what was happening and things were happening in different departments. And the longest, we talked about, as long as you were in that range, that was fine. But it might be wise or it might be prudent that we know that you're doing that because that has, that has always been a little issue of, I got this extra money and instead of it going back to the general fund, I'm gonna take what's left and give it to, all to this person.
Because you won't get it back to next year.
And that has not been allowed because of seven.
That's right.
So, that...
Seven doesn't allow that.
No, that has not been allowed since this policy was changed. Now, it used to prior to the policy.
Yes, I don't think there is.
But there, that's no longer.
What about to the same person?
Now, to the same person, if it's a new position within that fiscal year, they had all the way up until, you know, the, not the end of the year because we start working on budgets. So, I always get with them, when we start working on budget, do you anticipate on bringing your newly hired position up at all? And there's been situations where it's yes, but only by a quarter, or no, I don't. But that has been allowed because that's how policy read about vacant positions. But this one, on the first, second, third paragraph, it says on six one, any elected official or department head subordinate to the Commissioner's Court may request a change to a job description, grade level, or salary. So, in her instance, if y'all strike out seven and she has a newly hired position within this fiscal year and she wanted to bump them up because she hired them at a lower rate, she would have to turn it into Lucy, and Lucy would have to turn it in in February or May or whenever, and y'all would have to approve that.
Correct.
And that, but see, I think the judge is on a different understanding that it's only grade level.
Well, yes, but...
Okay, so...
But that's not what the policy says.
No, it says or salary. And it's mainly geared towards the newly, the vacant positions. That's mainly our concern is the vacant positions. How do we approach the...
The issue still is, is there.
Yes, I understand your standpoint.
If you hire somebody at a lower rate and you go in there after 90 days, so to speak...
Yes, sir.
And bump them up a dollar...
Yes, sir.
An hour.
You consider it a merit and it needs to come...
What about the other employees? Because you're not bumping them up, but for two reasons, longevity or merit. And there's only two instances that I think, I can think of, barring the Sheriff's Department talking, that we pay for longevity, and that's tenure and retirement. The other is merit. And if you, if you pay somebody based on merit, then we have a merit pay policy for that, on how that's to be handled. So...
That ultimately is merit, you know, when you say, well, they done a dear job and I'm gonna bump them up, you know?
And that creates, can create resentment throughout not just that department, but other departments throughout the county. I'm not saying that, I mean, if you bring it to Commissioner's Court, the Commissioner's Court basically can take the monkey off the elected official or department head's back and say...
Yes, sir.
We, we don't have a problem with you paying them $15 or $16 an hour.
I just want to make sure everyone is on the same page on...
But the issue is that we have two conflicting policies and we need to figure out what we need to do with this.
One more point on six one, on the third paragraph, where it does say, may request a change to a job description, grade level, or salary. One of the things that we, and my thought was, we changed the salaries within those grades because initially, it was set at a 20% from bottom to top. And in an effort to keep our good employees who were at the top or who were redlined, we as a court increased that range from 20% to 25%. And the or salary is what, in my mind, or that adjustment is what we're talking about with the salary here, if I'm making any sense at all. But it's a change in the job description that would then say, okay, it's going to be a different grade, and or do we need to expand or contract the differential in that grade?
I, I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
I, I don't necessarily, and that, that, there may be some issues that are lost in interpretation here, but it was my understanding through the creation of this policy with the help of Ms. Pope, that it, it would include a salary change...
Okay.
To address the specific kind of issue that we're talking about.
And I can live with that as long as we all understand it.
Yes.
And we have, we put together, or that we have an understand, and I guess, but I'm gonna go back to what our attorney says, Mr. Foltz, that when we're all dead and gone or replaced, we want to make sure the next court has a pretty clear understanding of what is supposed to be done and what the intent is. So, it's, we either need to clear it up in the policy or make sure some of us get reelected.
I, I, I would say, I would rally behind what he's saying, maybe just make that adjustment and say, with Commissioner's Court approval, or at least we're aware of.
Shall we, you want to make a motion and we'll make that adjustment to the policy and see how that works for us?
Yes.
And if it doesn't, we'll be back at some point.
I can't do that. I'd make the motion that we modify section seven under the, or number seven under section C, Policy on Compensation, to strike the word without commis, without and insert the word with.
So, just, y'all take this.
Take out the out and leave the with.
Correct.
We have a motion, is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion before the court by Commissioner Cox to making that adjustment on, and the correct title of this policy is Policy on Compensation, item number seven, numerical seven, to take out the word without and replace it with the word with. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a second from Commissioner Walker. Is there any further discussion?
Can I ask one question? On this seven, is that still gonna...
I didn't say yes. Go ahead.
Is it still gonna be February and May when these can be submitted or anytime within fiscal year?
It would be February and May, but the, section 6.1 also says and refers that the Commissioner's Court may review or adjust any job description, grade, or salary scale according to the needs of Grimes County.
So, I don't, I don't think that would limit you from November the 1st submitting something or whenever.
Yeah, and that's what we have an HR department for. And to address your, the comment section here, I mean, I personally, I get what you're, you're doing. We just, not you in particular, I just, I understand the concept, we have a conflicting policy that we need to address so that everybody's playing on the same, same field. And I would say hire them and then do an evaluation and justify it to court while later on, you might want to do.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing on all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed? Motion carries. Minutetakers, did you guys get all of that?
Oh, yeah. Definitely, we got it. Definitely, we got it.
I mean, we beat it to death and you followed the phone. All right, Commissioner, thank you. That would then bring us to Agenda Item Number Nine, Consider and Take Action Regarding the Burn Ban on Authorized County Judge's Signatory. Mr. Lilly, any thoughts on that?
Uh, we're about to get a lot of rain.
Okay, plus, and, and I know we've had some controlled burns that have thrown some smoke in the air and a few people have called and said, what, what's going on?
And those controlled burns have all been over in Montgomery County.
Right.
But that's, every year, they do those large controlled burns and they get a strong people. So I always tell citizens, don't hesitate to call if you don't know. You know, it's better to call than not to call.
Since we're talking about burns and so forth, do you get notification on that in any way, shape, or form from the Forestry Service?
No.
Would it be helpful if you did?
Um, I believe a lot of times dispatch gets notifications, but I don't directly get it, but it probably would help to close that loop, you know, in case there are questions from the public, I can help address those also. Uh, and usually they go, they call 911 and dispatch usually knows when those controlled burns are taking place, so it's not a big deal if I don't know.
Okay.
But again, sometimes I might get calls.
All right. Fair enough. I propose no action then. That'll take us to Agenda Item Number 10.
I move we adjourn.
I see.
There's a motion before the court by Commissioner Dobieansky on Agenda Item Number 10, seconded by Commissioner Walker. All in favor say aye. Is there any discussion?
Good.
I don't wanna rush a gun on this. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.